Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. If you could please arise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaskovich.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are up to approval of the minutes from the October 20th meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Gaskovich. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
And those that motion carries, one abstention, Councilmember Johnson. This is like a first, nothing on the consent agenda. Wow. So we do have two items for our public hearing though. And the first one is to hold a currency exchange license, public hearing, and consider a license renewal for your exchange. Minnesota statutes, chapter 53A dot oh four requires the governing body to hold a public hearing and render a decision regarding the license renewal within 60 days or by December 11th, 2020. The notice of public hearing was published in the Anoka County Union Herald on October 23rd, 2020. The Minnesota Department of Commerce conducted a state level background review on the appropriate personnel. No matters which would impact concurrence with the license were discovered. And your exchange's fee schedule, well, that is attached here. So does anybody have any questions about this before we open the public hearing or anything that needs to be said first? Okay, then, in the matter of the currency exchange license for your exchange, we'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing for your exchange license renewal? Anybody here for the public hearing? With that, we will close the public hearing. And it looks like, is that actually a motion?
Yeah, it looks like it should be a motion, so I'll try that one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we concur with the Minnesota Department of Commerce renewal of the 2021 currency exchange license for your exchange, 3070 Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item three and another public hearing, but this is actually, we're going to continue the public hearing to vacate the public roadway easement. And this is for a parcel down there in Port Riverwalk. But due to needing additional time to receive the amended order, we're being asked to open the public hearing to consider the public roadway vacation, but then continue said public hearing to December 1st, 2020. Okay, so we still are going to open it tonight. So on February 24th, 2020, the city's Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, sold its Port Riverwalk redevelopment site to Centra North LLC for construction of a 136-unit detached townhome development. Since that time, development work has commenced as planned, including installation of much of the public infrastructure and construction of several housing units. At the time of closing, the HRA retained ownership of two small areas of the overall site because of ongoing title proceedings related to these areas. Additionally, the title company retained escrows totaling $220,000, which will be released to the HRA when the title proceedings are complete and the parcels can be conveyed to the developer. So on September 15th, 2020, council adopted resolution 20-83, requesting a public hearing for public roadway and set a public hearing for November 4th, 2020. Staff is now requesting the council delay its consideration of the vacation. The delay is in consideration of the vacation is necessary because Anoka County has not issued an amended order on this matter or the new certificate of title to HRA for the Zillow Street property. Staff expects to receive the amended order in the next couple of weeks. So does anybody have any questions or anything else that needs to be said before we open the public hearing? No? Mr. Brody, and we're just going to open this public hearing and we're going to continue this public hearing.
That would be our request.
Okay. All right. In the matter of vacating the public roadway easement in Port Riverwalk, we've opened the public hearing and...
Do you want a motion, Dave?
Yeah.
We'll move to continue the public hearing to December 1st, 2020 for further consideration and input.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler to continue the public hearing to December 1st, 2020. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that matter is continued and the public hearing is continued through December 1st.
And I think the record can reflect it, nobody's here for the public hearing to start today anyway.
And no one online.
Right.
And we are up to item four on this evening's agenda. And that is consider adoption of ordinances 2237 and 2238 and resolutions setting the 2021 fees and charges. Mr. Stemwell, anything you want to highlight on this? Looks like just a lot of little five dollar bumps, 80 to 85, 70 to 75, and...
There's a decrease in there.
Yeah. Oh, there was one decrease, wasn't there?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the two ordinances were introduced to the city council on October 20th. Primarily, the fees related to those remained either flat. A few of them were increased by sort of a cost of living factor, and then others are set by the state. But for the most part, the fees set by ordinance were remaining flat in 2021 compared to 2020. Along with the request on it are the two resolutions that set certain fees and charges, and then the second one that sets fees for CTN Studios. A lot of the fees for CTN Studios that are listed here are production-based things, rental things, that certainly we tried to cover our costs, and then some when we're out there doing business with partners. So Eric Strauss, the station manager, takes a look at that every year, kind of determines where his market's at and how much, you know, he think he can benefit from those projects at CTN. And then I'll just leave it open that if there are other staff that want to comment on any of the related fees or any questions, the city council will be happy to field those.
I have one, I have a question. In section three, under, you know, waste and recycling hauler license for his vehicle, there's three lines of response to false alarms, four to five, response to false alarm six to nine, and response to false alarms 10 or more. What kind of false alarms are we talking about here? Are we talking about security systems?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Mayor, Council, yeah, that fee is for false alarms at either business, urgent alarms, or... Frankly, neither one of those circumstances would be ever allowed to get to 10. Businesses are really responsive when they find out that they've had a number of false alarms, so... But it's just a fee structure that needs to exist.
And if it goes to 10 or more, then we're talking $225 each, each call, right?
That's correct. I've never heard, in my 25 years, I've never heard of it reaching that level. So the alarms are better than they used to be. To be honest, those fees came from years ago when alarms were, had a hair trigger, I guess you'd say, but they're pretty good now, so we don't, it really isn't an issue.
Yeah, I just, yeah, when it got up to that, or 10 or more, you're going, like, figure it out. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on this? All right. Your honor, Councilmember Kicker?
Mr. Hammer has something.
Oh, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd just like to point out that we had a work session here a few months back about some new cell fees that would be implemented. So, let's see, ordinance, resolution 20-94 includes that fee under commercial wireless telecommunications. So it's a, it's a thousand dollar fee, that's a new fee that hadn't been established in the past. It's kind of the above and beyond work for those type of applications, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Okay, so that's, that's like if a wireless company wants to change something up on the water tower or something, is that kind of what we're talking about?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Councilmember Kicker?
Your honor, so do you want us to do all four of these separately?
How about we compromise and do the two ordinances together and the two resolutions together?
All right, fair enough, let's do that. All right, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2237, revising certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1st, 2021, and adopt ordinance 2238, establishing permit and inspection fees for building, for the building inspections division as authorized by Minnesota State Statute, section 16B-62 subdivision 1, effective January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Gaskovich. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Councilmember Kicker, you want to continue?
Sure. I make a motion to adopt resolution 2094, establishing certain fees and charges effective January 1st, 2021, and also adopt resolution 2095, establishing certain fees and charges for the use of CTN studio facilities effective January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item six. And that's to consider resolution 20-92, adopting affordable and life cycle housing goals for the Met Council's livable communities program.
That's number six, we need to go back to five.
Well, see, I just marked all of five up like we had just passed that one, so...
We did four.
And I didn't put any marks on four. So, all right. Mr. Ferneilis, just hang on, we're going back to four, or five. All right. Item five is to consider resolution 20-96, establishing 2021 fees and charges for use of city park facilities and recreation act activities. The changes for the 21 fees and charges for use of the city park facilities are as follows: Riverwind Meeting Rooms, one or two for weekend rental. Half-day rental rates increased from $75 to $95 for residents and $100 to $125 for non-residents. Full-day rental rates increased from $125 to $145 for residents and $175 to $180 for non-residents. This fee better reflects the cost of maintenance for the rental. Crooked Lake Park, the daily rate fees increased from $75 to $95 for residents and $100 to $125 for non-residents. And Lyons Coon Creek Park, the daily rate fees increased from $75 to $95 for residents and $100 to $125 for non-residents. Adult softball, summer softball league increased from 950 to 965. Was there any other, anything else, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, Council, I'll just comment that the three park facilities, Riverwind, Crooked Lake, and Lyons Park, have a little more increases than we would typically see just on like a cost of living basis. Excuse me, in all those cases, they're very new park facilities, so we took a little closer look. In some cases, we had maybe a year or so under our belt in terms of operations out there, with the exception of the Lyons Coon Creek Park. And so we took a closer look at what the maintenance costs were to have our weekend attendants and evening attendants go out there, open up, clean, do things of that nature. And we also took a look at what other cities were charging for similar facilities, and certainly this brings us into more of a even keel with the cost of operation and with that market. I'd say we're still on the lower end in terms of our comparables, but we feel like this is a good number for 21. Excuse me. I gotta get some drink.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So, the question probably reflects or is reference to Riverwind more than the parks. I know earlier this year, we did our fee structure for the Civic Center early because people book ahead, and so 2021 was already being booked, but it was at rates and we were out of sync. Would we need to consider next year doing the same kind of a thing for Riverwind? I'm assuming that the outdoor shelters and softball league isn't going to be a hot property in January, so we probably have time there, but was just wondering if we need to consider the timing of this review next year.
Mayor and Council, I would say that Riverwind, the difference between the Civic Center is we get a lot of weddings, larger events where they want to book out well in advance. The facilities at Riverwind are much smaller, and we don't tend to see those long-term bookings like you would with the Civic Center or Bunker Hills, and so I don't think it's as much as a concern, but I will defer to Mr. Hammer if he's got any other commentary on that.
I would say that's an excellent point. Councilmember Geisler, we'll certainly look at what our bookings are and how early those come in, and maybe we'll have to adjust the timeline on this one as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kicker?
No question, just making a motion. Make a motion to adopt resolution 2096, establishing certain fees and charges for the use of city park facilities effective January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Now, item six.
Now, you can do, now you can do number six, yeah.
Okay. Item six is to consider resolution 20-92, adopting affordable and life cycle housing goals for the Met Council's livable communities program. And we'd actually workshopped this this evening before the, before the meeting. Mr. Ferneilis, do you want to hit on the highlights of this, or do you want me to read your comprehensive discussion here?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I'd be happy to provide just a quick summary for the council.
Sure.
So as we, as we mentioned in the work session, this relates to adoption of affordable and life cycle housing goals that allow the city to participate in the local housing incentives account, which is a program through the Met Council. Every 10 years, cities that participate in the program have to update goals. These goals are a requirement to participate in the grant program, and that provides, the LHIA provides grants to cities for various housing redevelopment transit-oriented development projects. We have, Coon Rapids has participated in the livable communities program since 1996. We have utilized LHIA funding previously, most recently on our Riverdale Station TOD project. The last time the city updated its goals was in 2010, which covered the period from 2011 to 2020. So the new goals that we are asking council to adopt tonight really cover the next nine years from 2021 to 2030. It's important to point out that these are goals, they're not requirements. However, the goals that we have identified are, in cooperation with the Met Council, are consistent with the goals that we have in our comp plan. So for example, affordable housing goals of 251 to 457 units over the next nine years is in our comp plan right now. Life cycle goals of 2,000 units, which is based on forecasted growth of 4,000 people and roughly 2,000 households over the next nine years, that's also in our comp plan. So these aren't new goals, these are goals that, that the council has already adopted in our, in our comp plan. So adopting the goals tonight by resolution would then allow the city to participate in the program starting in 2021, and then going forward for the next year, next nine years beyond that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Ferneilis?
I'll take this, just as a comment, that we've already got our comp plan, we've got our goals, this aligns, and it gives us the opportunity to go to the Met Council to get additional funding should we have projects come up within the next 10 years. So with that, I will make a motion to approve resolution 20-92, adopting affordable and life cycle housing goals for the Metropolitan Council's LCA, Local Housing Incentives Account Program.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Let's just skip right to item eight here.
[laughing].
Or not. Item seven, consider purchase of a fire truck. One of our favorite topics, huh, Chief?
You want to roll?
All right. We're looking at, it's being recommended, purchase of one fire engine through a contract for cooperative purchasing. Looking to purchase one 2021 Rosenbauer fire engine utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract with the Houston Galveston area council at a base cost of $692,390. This will replace a 2010 Pierce fire engine, and they anticipate the existing truck will be kept as a reserve engine, and the 2010 Rosenbauer rescue truck will then be sold for approximately $50,000. We're looking that the order be placed on Thursday, November 5th, well, that would be tomorrow, I guess, with anticipated delivery in December of 2021. Funding for the replacement fire engine has been included in the proposed 2021 city budget, and while the budget will not be approved until December, the city can realize a more timely delivery of the new fire engine by ordering now. Mr. Stemwell, anything you want to add, or Chief, you anything you want to add, or...
Mayor and Council, I don't have anything extra, but John, you haven't been to a meeting for a while, so we'd welcome you to the Metro.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, the reason for this request is the build time is between 13 and 14 months. So if we order it tomorrow, they've assured us that they can have this delivered by the end of 2021. As a point of information, we went through this drill about a year ago, and I believe it was on October 2nd, we ordered the current truck that's under construction right now, that'd be Engine 1, and that is going to be, we're looking at delivery in the next couple weeks. So the timeline is, like I say, basically in the 13 to 14 months. So again, we'd like to get it ordered now so we can take delivery in 2021, and I'll stand for any questions.
That Houston Galveston area council, that's the same one we joined with when we bought the Ariel truck probably eight years ago or whenever that was.
That was probably about the first time we used it, yeah. We've been using that for some time, and that's for the competitive bidding process.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions?
So when we get this new truck, are you going to post pictures on Facebook and Instagram so you all see the new truck?
I'm sure Mr. Gilzrude will do that for us.
Somebody with an Instagram account might do that?
Right, right. Won't be me.
And because of that, I will make the motion to authorize the purchase of one replacement fire engine.
Second.
Second.
I'll give it to Wade, so he's not a time delay.
Motion by, motion by Geisler. Second by, second by Demmer, just because you want to be able to tell Felix that you bought a fire truck tonight.
There you go.
All right. Any discussion?
That's great background.
All right. Nobody wants to run the chief over the coals on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chief. And now, item eight, we want to consider the Bernice Olson ordinance. Well, she's been working on this for so long, she deserves actually to have her name in the ordinance. Consider introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on 121st Avenue. This proposal came about due to visibility concerns related to on-street parking along 121st Avenue west of Hanson Boulevard. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed the area on July 1st, 2015, June 26th, 2018, and July 14th, 2020. Prior requests for no parking were denied based on traffic volumes and roadway geometrics, which is designed wide enough to accommodate on-street parking. Upon further discussion with residents, changed conditions due to the recently completed Hanson Boulevard upgrade and onsite review. Staff believes parking restrictions at intersecting streets would provide increased safety for vehicles accessing 121st by eliminating the site obstructions of parked vehicles near intersections. Staff sent the, sent a letter to area property owners requesting feedback regarding the placement of the no parking signs on the north side of the street. This no parking request requires an ordinance amendment that includes a two-part process, which we're considering tonight as the introduction, and then later will be the adoption. And then staff will inform council of any comments received as they come in. Following completion of the process, staff will send a follow-up letter to property owners advising them of council's decision. Mr. Hammer, Mr. Stemwell, anything you want to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll just make you aware that following notification of the residents, so far we've received 27 replies to the letters that were sent out, and 26 of the 27 were all favorable.
Not surprising. That seems like a lot of how many emails they had on that. Probably you too, Councilmember Gaskovich.
Yeah, I think between me and you, we've seen these for all four years that I've been on the council.
Yeah, well, the Traffic Review Committee reviewed in 2015, 18, and 2020, so...
Been reviewed and reviewed and reviewed.
Yeah. All right. Anybody have any questions about this? Anybody needed further information? If not, we will consider the ordinance restricting parking on 121st Avenue introduced. And we are on to item nine, which has a very familiar ring. Consider introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on Woodcrest Drive. This proposal came about due to resident and staff concerns regarding on-street parking along Woodcrest Drive, south of Egress Boulevard. Now, that south of Egress gets really confusing, I had to really think about that, but we're talking, yeah, essentially south or east of Egress, they're going towards 99th. The Traffic Review Committee reviewed the area on July 14th, 2020, and is recommending parking restrictions through the S curve on the north end of Woodcrest Drive to eliminate site obstructions and increase safety for pedestrians and vehicular traffic. Staff sent the attached letter to area property owners requesting feedback regarding the placement of no parking signs on the west side of the street as depicted on the graphic. So in one paragraph, we talk about it being on the north end, well, the north end, okay, all right. We're talking about putting them on the west side of the street, which really feels like the north side of the street. This is no parking request requires an ordinance amendment that includes a two-part process, again, introduction and adoption, and we will be informed of any comments received as they come in. Following completion of the process, staff will send a follow-up letter to property owners advising them of council's decision. In addition to the above requests, the staff has been in contact with the car dealerships on the east side of Woodcrest Drive several times in the past regarding excessive on-street parking by vehicles and delivery trucks. Per city ordinance 1158, no parking signs will be reinstalled along the east side of Woodcrest Drive from Egress Boulevard and south to 99th Avenue, where they have been removed due to the construction or other Boulevard maintenance activities over the I almost feel like we should turn the graphic on for this one because of all of the south and east and northerly, and we're introducing this, and it might be nice to show folks a graphic of the street and where the no parking is being considered. It's just... It's just.
Yeah, and my, my only concern is that, although I don't think this impacts it, is that this is a pretty popular area for people in the winter to go sledding. And I don't think this proposed ban really hits that area, and there are plenty of other places, including a parking lot.
Right.
To park in, but I just wanted to make sure that staff felt that way, too, because it's a, it's a destination for that in the winter.
All right. Oh, and there we go. Nice job.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
And just, you know, thinking in terms of the sledding hill there, this, the red here stops well, well short of the sledding hill. This is really just through the car dealership area.
Right.
And so the park there is just the very north edge of what is the Frisbee Golf Course. So there does end up being some on-street parking during baseball tournaments down a little farther south when the parking lot fills up, so I'm assuming that that would continue to be allowed. I did have, I guess, two questions. I assume when the Safety Board reviews this, they, they think about whether getting rid of the parked cars would actually increase speed and make sure that they're comfortable with the speed people drive with the, with the road being effectively wider. So that's question one, and then question two is, are we going to make allowances when the car dealerships have the big car carriers that they park for an hour while they're unloading the cars? Because I feel like that's sort of a special case where it's maybe tough to get a car carrier in and out of those parking lots, and that we might want to have a little bit of a loading zone for those situations. But it sounds like you talked to the car dealerships, so I figured I'd just ask those two questions and see what the answers were.
Anybody have a answer to that, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor Council, we certainly will monitor the speeds through the area. Anytime you open it up, you're giving people that opportunity. There's certainly the visibility concerns, and that's, that's one of the reasons, Councilmember Johnson's point, is why the east side was no parked back in 1988.
Right.
And those signs kind of disappears because the people would park on the east and then cross the road over into the park, so that became the safety issue. With regard to the loading zone, we do not want, we do not allow, we do not not want loading and unloading of vehicles on Woodcrest Drive. That's one of the reasons why we don't want parking there, but I believe the dealerships have been spoken to numerous times about their loading and unloading of vehicles on the public road. That's part of the reasons why they've done some of the improvements to the site, so they can get semis onto their sites. But yeah, we're, Councilmember Demmer, I don't want to encourage any loading or unloading on Woodcrest Drive. That's what their facilities are for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Demmer. Mr. Hammer, so if, I recall when the, when the dealership built their new building, they had an open house, and it was cars up and down Woodcrest Drive to facilitate everybody that was there for the open house. I assume if they have a big event, they can work with staff, and maybe we can bag the no parking for a day event or something?
Like a special event kind of thing.
Special event kind of a thing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council, that's no different than any other location, graduation parties, things of that nature, that if people just notify us in advance, we can work with them on accommodations.
Perfect. Okay. And that's actually a good reminder for folks, too, for other areas. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or any other information needed? Okay, then in the matter of an ordinance restricting parking on Woodcrest Drive, we will consider this introduced. And item 10 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 5-900 Tobacco. And this is just to bring us into conformity with the state, the state law. With the change in state and federal law to require that those purchasing and using tobacco be 21 years of age, a revision to the city's code is needed. So the ordinance outlines the proposed changes to bring the code into compliance with the 21 years of age requirement, and an update on administrative penalties due to a change in state law. During the revision, staff did use the recommendations from the League of Minnesota Cities to model the, model the tobacco ordinance. Ms. Lenzmeyer, anything you want to cover, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I will point out that all tobacco license holders have been notified of the proposed change and given notice that they will be allowed to speak if they have a concern at the upcoming meeting when we adopt it on the 17th of November.
Okay. Pretty confident we're going to adopt this.
Assuming you adopt it.
Any questions or any other information needed on this? All right, then, in the case of ordinance amending City Code Chapter 5-900 Tobacco, we will consider that introduced. And we are on to item 11, which is to consider Resolution Number 18-13A sub eight, approving plans and specifications for Bridge 4575 repair project and authorizing solicitation of bids. And, Mr. Hammer, this is the Coon Rapids Boulevard Historic Highway 10 Pedestrian Bridge. That's what Councilmember Johnson always likes to refer to it as.
Yeah, right. The old bridge.
Do you want me to read the description, Mr. Hammer? Or you want to just kind of talk about what you're proposing to have done to the bridge?
Mr. Mayor Council, briefly, we, we bid this, or we packaged this as a bid earlier this year to try to get it done in coordination with the Coon Rapids Boulevard project and the Riverwalk project. We only received one bid at that time, and it was significantly higher than we were expecting. So we pulled it back. We're going to package it as a public bid now, and we'll put it out for everyone. It's just concrete rehab work to get rid of some of the spalling concrete, strip the old paint off there and put a new coating of paint, do some channel improvements underneath the bridge, some landscaping components that go with that, so kind of spruce that corner up again.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd actually like to ask you, if you are going to solicit bids on that, to also consider, or at least evaluate, whether or not there's a need for increased lighting in the area as it's part of the trail system, and we did have a public safety incident there, happened there some time ago, that was of some note to some of the people in my ward. So if there's a way to improve the lighting, given that it's a part of the trail system, I'd be interested to know what's recommended and what the costs associated with that might be.
Councilmember Johnson, we'll definitely look at that. I'll also look at the lighting that spills from the new lights we just put up as part of the roadway project.
Thank you.
I think, I think a big repair there was clearing all the brush out from underneath that bridge, because that was, that had overgrown so much that it really was a hazard.
Your Honor.
Councilmember, who? Demmer?
Demmer.
Hi.
And just another question, and I might be late on this one, but that area has some metal artwork stuff that is a bit dated, and I'm just sort of, I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to work with our art commission or, you know, Historic Commission or somebody to see if there was any opportunity for them to make updates shortly after or in the same timeframe, just to see if there's anything we want to do with that area that, if we're fixing up the bridge, then maybe we give a facelift to the area just to the side of the bridge that, I think you, you know, has all that metalwork on it that's, like I said, getting a little old-looking.
Mr. Hammer, is that a different discussion, or?
Mr. Mayor Council, I can defer to Ms. Lenzmeyer about the Arts Commission, certainly, but if, if the request is, can we put a fresh coat of paint on, on the metal artwork, I could certainly look at including that either in this package or a supplemental package, and then it'll just be, what does it cost and where's the money going to come from?
It's similar artwork to, that's what we did up at Riverdale, right? When we, didn't we have that painted? Councilmember Geisler?
The, the wave pattern of the metal is, was part of the Boulevard Framework Plan from way back when, that was intended to be a visual movement of the river along the whole corridor. It never made it past that section. So to me, if we're going to look to change it out, I mean, if there's a need to take it out, that's one thing, if it's a desire to change it, I think it needs to be a much bigger conversation to see, is it something that we truly want to have as a common theme that ties the ports together? Because that was the original intent.
And I'll just add.
As an intending, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to add that part of the Coon Rapids Boulevard project, that median work that was done includes some of that flowing colored concrete landscaping component to try to tie it into what was there previously.
Councilmember Demmer, did you still have something else to add?
Yeah, I wasn't intending to open up a larger conversation about the Boulevard. It was more of a opportunity that if we're freshening up that whole area, if there's a commission that would find it an interesting thing, think about what they can do differently if they were interested, that I would urge us to consider whatever good ideas they had.
All right. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of Resolution Number 18-13A, parens, eight, close parens, accepting plans and specifications for the Bridge 4575 Repair Project and authorize a solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Any other discussion? You didn't want to work the word historic pedestrian bridge into that, then?
No, no, it's the old bridge.
All right. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to open mic public comment. Do we have anybody online, Mr. Stemwell?
We do not.
And we certainly don't have anybody here, so. And I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are on to other business.
I guess if we could ask Ms. Lenzmeyer how her week went, or her last few weeks.
Hey, how'd your week go?
Mayor and Council, we were very busy. So I'll start out with a little statistic. Back in 2016, for that presidential, 6,000 people voted by absentee. The number today for this election, 20,248.
Wow.
So it's a big turnout, we've been very busy. That number will continue to change. As you know, the appeals court decision said that the ballots that come in up through the 10th of November were to be segregated, but it didn't say they were to be rejected. So the state intends to add them to the count up through November 10th, so we don't have final numbers. Interestingly, there's about 12,000 plus or minus absentee ballots still outstanding countywide, so we'll see how many of those come in during this next week. That just means that they have requested them and not yet returned them.
And, and didn't come in and vote otherwise?
Well, what if they turn those in? That will be checked before they're allowed to be accepted, so. I will say that we had a great turnout through AB and through in-person voting. When we closed the polls, we were at about 84%. That number will change a little bit, but that is a really good turnout for us. I think statewide, we had a great turnout, too. Thank you to the election judges. They showed up and they did the job. Thank you to the voters. Everybody was calm, cool, and collected. We did our civic duty, we didn't have any mayhem. It was wonderful. And I will say a special thank you to the National Honor Society. They sent me a big group of student judges who volunteered, who will not get paid. They volunteered from 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 o'clock at night at most of our locations, so that was real fun to get involved with. And I'll remind you that you have a canvas meeting on November 13th, that's 7:30 in the morning, should be quick. We won't have the abstract until the last minute, so you'll see that email link in the wee hours of a night before, but the agenda will get posted saying that we will meet. Mr. Mayor, you have the county canvas.
I do.
That same day at 11:30.
Yep.
If anybody has any questions otherwise.
Yep, and in fact, they moved it from the counter commi, from the upstairs down into the general, down into the general.
The atrium, yes.
Atrium, yeah, that's the place.
They think there may be interested public.
Yeah.
If you could do me a solid and try not to pick too many of our precincts for audit, that'd be amazing.
I don't recall ever having any control over that.
No, no, it's random.
All right. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor Council, I'd just like to add a thank you to Joan Lenzmeyer in the city clerk's office, which includes Stephanie Lincoln, Amanda Westling. They've put in a lot of hours here the last week and a half especially, but going back months now, these elections have been very time-consuming, and they've done a terrific job, lots of planning, coordination, and stress that goes into it, but in the, in the end, it always works out, but that's really a testament to the amount of time that they put into it to make sure all those things are going to happen. And of course, just to reiterate the thank you to all the election judges, because without them, it doesn't work. It's sort of interesting now that election day has really become just the election deadline as we have so much absentee and early voting, and so we're evolving as, as those laws have changed, and people have now become accustomed to voting early, and, and we're acclimated to that. So as we look forward, we'll adjust as we need to for staffing as we go out, but thanks again to the clerk's office, and it went really well.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, just a special note to the election judges that worked at Hoover Elementary. The city clerk did talk to the engineer about redoing the street, so we're sorry about that. I got a text that redid the street to get to Hoover School. Because I got a text from my niece, who's election judge, and she said, people are complaining, they don't know how to get here. So.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson?
Other than that little wrinkle, I just, I wanted to echo Mr. Stemwell's comments and, and thank city staff and all the election judges and all the people that were involved in this process. I have to say that I have not gotten as many complimentary kinds of comments from people about how easy it was this year and how well the city dealt with them, because there are a lot of people in, especially in the last week or so, who had requested an absentee ballot but weren't sure whether to stick it in the mail or to come in and to drop it off, or, or they had a problem with it. I had a problem with mine, we're all like, like all the pages were like glued together, so I had to come in and, and get that ballot spoiled and, and vote in person and whatnot. Fantastic job. I think it speaks really well for the professionalism of both the city and all the volunteers and people who stepped forward, so thank you very much for that. It was a really nice effort.
I was very impressed with how careful everybody was.
Yeah.
Keeping the distance, keeping the masks, keeping everything was just, you felt very safe going through there, and it seemed like all of the election judges were keeping themselves safe, and it was very well done.
You know, when, when you look nationwide, I just look at our experience here, and I think how proud I am that we have the system that we have here in Minnesota. I really do.
And I do, too.
All right. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Joan, Joan had something.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Congratulations to the presumed winners in Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 4, and the at-large seat.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you for everybody putting yourself out there and all of the work to go through as candidates, and, yep, thank you very much. Okay.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.